Six oh three, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it.
First presentation is the Young and Right Campus Construction Capital Improvement Project.
So I'd just like to welcome Mike McCarthy from Young and Right Architects and Sarah Wilder from Campus Construction Management, as well as Dave Vauder, who's in the audience. They're going to take us through where we are at in planning for our next capital project. So take it away, folks.
All right. Well, thank you very much for joining us this evening and inviting us here to present to you guys some of the plans that we've been talking about for the future projects. So we can kind of run through some of those. So like Jeff said-
Just give me one second. Can you hear him speak so that those on video can, or they're streaming? You can hear it okay? Okay, thank you. Sorry, Mike.
Is there a way, should we make it bigger on that screen? Does it make a difference? Are we okay how we are with the screen and stuff or that?
It's showing on this screen.
Good? All right, seems all right.
Or if you take it out of presentation mode, Brandon.
It's showing on this one normal.
Yeah, because it's because you're doing it through Zoom. That'll be normal on-
I'm Mike McCarthy with Young and Right Architectural.
Sarah Wilder with Campus.
And we're going to be running through the schedule for the project, the scope items, some other things, and then reviewing some of the actual scope and what that means for the project.
All right, so I'll touch on the schedule. We're going to vote this December and hoping that it passes. We'll start the design process, which is about a year, year and a half long. We'll submit to SED, which right now approval timeline is eight to nine months, but we're hoping at that time it goes back down to six months, which is more typical. After it's approved by SED, we'll bid it out, and that's typically a two-month process. And then construction will begin in the summer of 27 and continue in 28, and then we'll close the project out in December of 28.
Okay, there we go. All right, one thing I wanted to hit on tonight, we're going to show you guys some images of some things that are just conceptual renderings that we've come up with. And part of the reason I wanted to talk about the design process is that's purely things that we have come up with, with none of your input yet. The way the project would work, which a lot of you have been through before, we'd get a positive vote. We would then work with the district to create some user groups and people that need to be at those meetings, and then meet with you to make sure that we're meeting what you guys need. So we're going to talk about some renovations to this space. We would probably talk to some of the music teachers, you know, principals, some other staff. So at this point, it's purely things we've come up with, and it's just a conceptual idea at this point. So one of the first things we want to talk about is the scope. We're looking at just shy of $29 million project that would have two propositions to it, which means it's two different areas that would be voted on by the district. And the first one would have no additional tax impact, and when the second one would be a 2% increase to taxes. So Prop 1 would be about $16.8 million, and what that would include would be the roof at the elementary school, some door and ventilation upgrades at the GLP building, as well as a pre-K renovation. And then at this building would be roof replacement and parking lot replacement. And just one note, next to some of these items, you'll see a star, and that just means we're going to hit on a little later, so we'll explain it a little bit as well.
Okay, and then included in Prop 2, we would make upgrades to the nurses' office at the elementary school, continue the classroom renovations like we started in the last project, continue the sidewalk replacement at the elementary school, replace the parking lot at the GLP, make upgrades to the foyer right outside the odd here, upgrades in this space to the stage, and just finishes upgrades in the main office and guidance office here, and sidewalk replacements, and then finally the baseball scoreboard replacement.
So let me dive into that, just while it's on the slide, if you don't mind. And the reason the propositions are divided in, as they are, Proposition 1 and Proposition 2, as Mike and Sarah just pointed out, Proposition 1 is no additional cost to taxpayers. This district's had a lot of success presenting projects in that manner. But as you look at that list of items, it's all infrastructure work. You know, there's no shine on the apple, as I like to say, you know, making some improvements like we did in the library and the hallway outside the library. That's all work that absolutely has to be done, and it's quite expensive. Proposition number 2 can only pass if Proposition 1 passes. If we can do the infrastructure work, and then we get a positive vote on Proposition 2, we can do some of the other work that we've already started. For instance, the renovation of those classrooms at the elementary building. Okay, thanks.
So we wanted to hit on some of the key scope items, like we were talking about. And one of the first ones, which is a big one, and it's a big cost item as well, is the roofs at the district. So two of the ones that we're looking at replacing are the elementary school and the high school. Both of those were done at the same time when they were last redone, which was in 2007. So it was November 17th, 2007, to be exact, and that warranty was a 20-year warranty, which takes us to November 17th of 2027, which would be about when that project is taking place. I added GLP on this slide as well, because I just wanted to show you when that one is up, which is 2030, which is why it's important that we start to deal with the roofs that are coming up with warranty, because there's others behind them. You know, just as things at your house, you know, you got to keep replacing things and kinds of that nature. You can see a couple of photos up there. The top one is the elementary school. You can see on the right, that's where the slate roofing is, so you see from Main Street. And then the lower picture is at the middle school, high school. We recently had a roof scan done. The district hired a firm to take a look at that. They did it about a month ago. They completed that scan, and here's some of the findings, which is just something that was important to show you guys. So you can see on the left is middle school, high school. All the areas that are blue are areas that are wet, so that means something underneath the roof, there was a leak at some point in time. The insulation got a little wet, so on, so forth. And then on the right is the elementary school, which has the same thing. And one of the key ones at the elementary school, you'll notice that big one in the middle, that's right over the odd, which, you know, we know had had some leaking issues in it. So it's important we address those items and correct that with that. So that's all the insulation below the top layer that's wet that's showing up during their scans. And they do those scans using infrared pictures. So basically during the day, the roof heats up. They come at night. They're actually usually here till about 2:00 in the morning. They take those pictures, and the areas that glow are the wet areas that warmed up during the day and haven't cooled down yet. So that's how they determine that. All right, Sarah's going to talk about the classrooms.
So in the top right here, you can kind of see it. These were the existing classrooms at the elementary school. And then in the bottom left, this is the upgraded space, so a lot brighter, a lot more whiteboard space, lots more storage. Yeah.
Okay. Next one is the pre-K classrooms. So this is at the GLP building. You can see a couple of the existing photos here. So it's just been an area that hasn't been updated in a long time. The floors are a little older, the storage, there's quite a bit of storage in there. Doesn't necessarily all work for the teachers and stuff, so we would upgrade those. Basically floors, finishes, all that good stuff. Here's just a picture of kind of an updated space, potential, again, just a potential idea of what it could be. Basically updating all the millwork, some fun new colors, you know, simplifying some of the floors and creating some spaces for the kids.
All right, and then the last project, we were able to replace the elementary school parking lot, which turned out really nice. So the idea would be to replace at the GLP. Here's some existing photos of just the deteriorating parking lot, and then same at the middle high school, we'd address this parking lot as well.
Okay, then on to the auditorium, which includes the foyer area here, just a couple photos. And again, we came up with some renderings, which are just conceptual images, again, that we created of some things that it could be moving forward. So the idea, you know, in what we've created is, you know, maybe a space for students to use, lunches, study halls, you know, things of that nature. Obviously, when you guys have auditorium functions, you could clear that space out. Everything that we would include in there, as much possible, would be, you know, movable furniture. We really do a lot of school colors and brighten up the space. Now, when you exit, you can take a look around there. Obviously, you know, there's some old light fixtures, the ceilings are a little old, there's been some leaks. So basically upgrading that whole space. So just a few other images for you. Next one is the auditorium itself, which is very convenient that we're in here today, so you can take a look around. I didn't even need to put the existing photos in. And that would be very similar to the foyer, where we'd be looking at replacing the seating, the floors, possibly the sound panels around. They're kind of the brown, fabricy ones on the walls. So basically updating that entire space. And if there's any questions, I am going to show a couple of videos that just walk through those spaces. If you guys want to have questions while those are showing, let's see if those work.
Mike and Sarah, can you just update everybody on building timing? Because I know that's how funding is going to be in certain things. So is it the elementary school that has to go last?
Yes.
Okay. So based on funding and reimbursement from the state, probably would be the summer of 28 is when the elementary school would be able to be worked on again. And then basically it'd be the GLP and the high school the summer of 27, right? Okay.
Three times of everything, we kind of phase it so that we're prepared for the summer's work.
Yeah, just to further explain that, there's something called a maximum cost allowance, which affects our aid, the money we get back from the state when we do a project. So things are timed very specifically, so that we always maximize our aid. The more aid we maximize, the less the taxpayers have to contribute. So as much as Mrs. LaRosa would like the work in her building to continue immediately, we're a few years away. Any questions from the board?
Just kind of give you an update. So the number that we actually started out with was, is it 48? 45 million?
You can do a lot of great stuff for $45 million.
Then we recently got it down to 34, and, you know, basically settled on 28 right now. And it all depends on, you know, how the bids go out. So in, you know, we have a bunch of alternatives out there that we could get to 34, but based on what's happening right now, bid-wise, cost-wise, this is what we feel comfortable that we can go out with and, you know, hopefully get passed and hopefully get this work done without any additional costs escalation, so.
Yeah, so the difficulty right now is that there's a large hole in the ground down on Southwestern. It's going to be filled by 2026. If you're not sure what I'm talking about, then go for a drive. That is driving construction costs through the roof, where my colleagues are reporting that bids are coming back more than double what they anticipated. So a 10 million project's coming in at over 20 million. We won't go out to bid until 2026. Our timing, it's not, we're a little bit serendipitous here, because that's right about the time where all the contractors that are involved in that stadium project are going to be looking for work. It is due to open in 2026, so they're already planning their next year's project. So we're hopeful that that timing works greatly in our favor.
And just one more kind of cool thing that happens. Right after we finished the presentation, we found out that the library space that was done in the last project won an American Society of Interior Design Award, and it got first place in this category, so it was kind of neat. So these were just the boards that we sent to them for them to review that's on there. So I thought that was kind of cool.
I just, I don't know if this is on, it doesn't work. I just have a question about the auditorium, the new one. As far as seating goes, is it the same amount of seats, fewer seats, more seats?
We would really take a dive into that once the project passes and take a look. It probably would be very similar. You know, we'd have to bring it up to ADA standards, make sure there's, you know, accessible seats and those things. Sometimes that takes up a little bit more space, but it would, you know, we'd work with the district to determine what you guys need for that.
There might be clouds in here, too. Joke from yesterday.
Thanks, Jeff. Well, thank you, guys.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you. Really appreciate both of your work and those that you represent. Thanks so much.
Thanks.
I-ready math presentation by Mrs. LaRosa.
Hello, good evening. I am here to present on I-Ready Math Implementation. I'm here with our math instructional leaders. We have Erin McNeil from the GLP, Jess Johnson from Eden Elementary School, and Joanna Funk from Eden Elementary School. So we just wanted to share some progress on implementing the I-Ready Classroom Mathematics Program, which is a fully comprehensive program that includes benchmarking, classroom curriculum, and personalized instruction. We're completing our second year of full implementation in every kindergarten through fifth grade classroom. We're seeing excellent progress, not only in the students' math ability, but mathematical thinking and reasoning. This is attributed to the instructional changes made in our classroom routines that help students explain their thinking and collaborate with one another. Today, we're going to highlight some program components, including data-driven instruction, collaboration, share some benchmarking results, and let you hear from a few of our very excited mathematical students. So today, we're going to discuss data-driven instruction, collaboration within the lessons, student perspective on the program, and just some of our spring data, because it's not all completed yet. I'm going to turn it over.
So I'll start. The GLP and the Eden Elementary, we do the same type of routine and everything, so some of this will be repeated. We give the diagnostic three times a year to provide the right support for each student. Those diagnostics are given right at the beginning of the school year, January, and then at this time in May. We use that data for many things, one being if they need AIS services. It puts them on their independent level called MyPath that they do on their iPads. Teachers aren't the only ones who use the data. The students get to see the data, and the parents get to see that, so that they can see if they're growing or not.
One of the ways that we use the diagnostic data is a prerequisite skills report. So before we teach a certain unit or lesson, we can go into the student's diagnostic and see what prerequisite skills they already have and what they are lacking, so we can group them correctly, which is a vast improvement from the data that we were getting before. In the middle of the year, we had a staff development where we took the diagnostic data and we leveled all of our students based on performance and growth, and we were able to group students that way, so everyone had a chance to do that. And we also, after each diagnostic, do grade-level meetings with all of the teachers, just so that they can see where each student is placed overall in the grade level, and we use that for AIS groupings as well.
So there's a lot of collaboration in this program. It's a very student-centered and focused classroom. Instead of the teacher doing the majority of the talking, it's the students. The teachers will engage the students in the mathematical discourse, and they try to get the children to discover it on their own through the process that elementary is going to talk about in a second. Students can explain their reasoning to the class, and there's never just one right way. They'll start with the more concrete examples and then work their way up to more of an abstract, and the students get to do and choose what works for them.
So after we started this program, this is a lot of the feedback we've heard from the teachers, is that they really love the Try, Discuss, Connect routine, because it gives every learner an access point, because they get to try the question on their own, and then they get to discuss with a partner. And then after that, they are able to then talk collaboratively with the whole group. So students, and I know that Gianna is going to talk about this, I'm not going to take too much of her thunder, so I'll let her talk a little bit more about her perspective on that, but I know that it lets them feel comfortable in their learning, and it doesn't make them feel intimidated. And then we do a lot of small group work in centers that allows the kids to work together at their academic levels, and then also gives us a little bit of more time for like enrichment purposes, to be able to work with kids who are just a tad bit higher. And then the teachers in the classroom right now have really become the coaches, the students are the leaders. A lot of times, they are taking over the conversations, they're leading the conversation, and I'm just there to just keep making sure things are rolling. And I know that that's something that teachers are noticing across the board with the program as well.
Okay, so we'd like to introduce you to some of our students. I have Emery Stumpf, who is a second grader here at the GLP. So Emery?
Hi, I'm Emery Stumpf, and I am in second grade at the GLP, and I love I-Ready Math. So do all the other students at the GLP. The hardest thing we have learned in math so far this year is fractions on a number line. I would recommend I-Ready Math to other students, because it's fun and challenging.
Okay, next we have Mara Canesto. She is a third grader, so I'm going to let her introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Mara. I'm in third grade. In fall, I got a 499 on my diagnostic, which is late third grade. In winter, I got a 523, which is grade four. In spring, I got a 546, which is grade six.
So what motivates you to do well in MyPath and on your diagnostics? Nope, I read you the wrong question. That's my fault, Mara, and I'm confusing you. She's like, wait a minute, your card's not there. How many of MyPath lessons have you passed this year?
205 lessons.
She's passed 205 lessons. That's huge. Right now, kids should be around 66 lessons passed for the year. It's about two lessons a year, or a week, and she is at 203. So we have character assemblies once a month, and the kids go wild when they see Mara's name up there, that she's reached 12 more lessons passed, so she's very excited about that. What grade-level skills are you working on currently in I-Ready?
Grade six and seven skills.
So again, Mara's a student who's in third grade, but is now having the opportunity to work on material that is at her level, things that are going to help her become more challenged and help reach her goals for herself. And then what do you like about MyPath the most?
I like MyPath, because I can learn stuff. I don't learn until I'm in older grades, bigger grades, same thing.
Good, beautiful, nice job. Next, we have Gianna Bougainhagen. She's a fifth grader. She's going to introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Gianna Bougainhagen, and I'm in fifth grade. I've completed 31 MyPath lessons this year. On my fall diagnostic, I got 472, which put me at fourth grade. In the winter, I got 488, which is early fifth grade, and in the spring, I got 505, which puts me at the mids.
What motivates you to do well in MyPath and on your diagnostics?
I like it when my mom gets it all excited, and I also like getting the pins. They're really cute.
So again, when the kids reach 12 MyPath lessons, for every 12, they receive a pin and a character assembly. So they're all working hard to get those pins, and it just keeps the kids motivated and gets them to want to earn those pins. And how does MyPath help you learn?
It helps me remember things I already learned, and I'm able, I'm able to do it with that adult helping me.
Good. And then what do you like about the Try, Discuss, Connect routine that we use in class?
I can try my best. If I don't know, I can talk to a partner, and if we both are confused, then we can talk about it together as a class.
Good, beautiful, nice job.
So currently, our students at the GLP are still working on their third diagnostic. So instead of including where they're at right now for this, I just decided to put some pictures in there of the Try, Discuss, Connect. In the first photo, there are some children who have, they've gone ahead and they've tried the problem, and they're showing all the different ways that they came up with to solve the problem. In the second picture, it's the part where the teachers are going around and looking to see what strategies the students are using, and then they choose students to come up and teach the class the way that they did it. The third picture is where they're doing collaboration with a partner, and then there's some centers going on there with the teacher, while the other kids are working on things like MyPath at their own level. And the last picture there is a student actually working on MyPath, which is what our friends talked about.
All right, and we just completed our spring benchmarking at the elementary school, and this is my favorite part, because we get to see the full year's growth of these students and how hard they've worked. So on the right-hand side is our triangle from the beginning of the school year. Tier one would be like on grade level, tier two is a grade level below, and then tier three is two or more grade levels below. So we have improved that triangle quite significantly from the fall to the spring, and it really shows how, you know, how hard the kids are working and how hard the teachers are working. We have decided to put in an incentive program for the kids. If they met their typical growth, they get some of those pins that Gianna was talking about. And if they meet their stretch growth, which is either in further than a year's growth, we're doing a little popsicle party for them, so they're excited about that, too. Yep. Do you guys have any questions for us about the program?
Or the kids.
Or the kids.
I think it's absolutely wonderful, and I wish I had I-Ready when I was, it's definitely way back when. But a great job. The statistics show what a great, like, improvement. That's awesome.
We could have you sit in with some of the kids. They would love to teach you.
I just retired from school, okay?
Can you go back to that slide with the triangles, please?
Sure.
Yeah, I don't know if you can hear what I said, because it wasn't really under my breath, but that is incredible. And there's so much to be proud of for each of you that's been involved with this program, all the work that went into selecting it. Obviously, this slide alone validates the selection, so thank you for that. To the students, thank you for presenting tonight and for all your hard work. I have a deep feeling that each of you takes after your mothers, and that's nothing against anyone else in the family, but I know some of your moms, and I know where you get that drive and that work ethic and that love for learning. So, thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, members of the Board of Education may request to have any items removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. If there are none, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, consensus items be approved.
Second.
No, I don't know what that booming is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
This is now the approximate position in time that the board has designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will receive all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status. For example, a parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a two-minute limit.
Listen, this is the fullest crowd we've had all year, so if someone wants to talk, let's hear it. Come on up.
New business and resignations. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of Clerk Typus Melanie Schroeder be accepted effective April 30th, 2024. The board and administration wish to thank Ms. Schroeder for her two years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of Library Media Specialist Rachel Edie be accepted effective June 28th, 2024. The board and administration thank Ms. Edie for the four years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Okay. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of Rihanna Christman from the position of Elementary Musical Sound Advisor be accepted.
Second. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of election inspector Karen Cornell be accepted effective April twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of bus driver Vincent Vaco be accepted effective June first, twenty twenty-four. The board and administration wish to thank Mr. Vaco for his thirty years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
All right, this is tough for me to read, but I will read it with stellar performance. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of elementary teacher Sabrina Kraska Anger be accepted effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, she would like to come up and speak after we approve it, if we approve it. No, I'm just kidding.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Everyone, um, before I even begin, I know this is a ten-year night, so congratulations to everyone that's being ten-year, put into ten-year this year. That's an awesome accomplishment. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm very nervous. But I want to start off by saying how much I appreciate the Eden Central School District. It saddens me to say that I will be resigning at the end of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. My husband Brandon and I will be relocating to Alpine, Texas for his work as a lineman. From growing up in this small town to becoming a student, then becoming an educator, I am beyond lucky to have been a part of this district in so many different ways. In twenty twenty, when Mr. Sortisio called me to tell me that I got the job as a kindergarten teacher at the GLP, I still remember how he started the phone call. He said, welcome home. He was one hundred percent accurate to say that this is my home and Eden will forever be my home. Sorry. The students, parents, families, coworkers, and administrators are truly the hardest thing to walk away from. I can't thank Lauren Carter enough for everything she taught and done for me, has done for me, to help my teaching career grow over the past four years. The connections and relationships I have made with so many people in this small, loving community are the things that I will be forever grateful for. I hope eventually my husband and I will make our way back to New York. When that day comes, I hope, I hope to still be welcomed back and considered for any open position. This district will forever have, hold a special place in my heart and I can't thank you all enough. And lastly, once a writer, always a writer. Thank you.
Where are the tissues? Seriously. She's my niece, by the way. That's why. All right, new business appointments. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Laura Burkeby be granted tenure as a psychologist effective August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Danielle Carbone be granted tenure as an elementary teacher effective August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Christina Dahmer be granted tenure as an elementary teacher effective August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Lori Gregory be granted tenure as an administrator effective August eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing the probationary period, Miles Kipner be granted tenure as a music teacher effective August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Amy Lincoln be granted tenure as an elementary teacher effective August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Stephanie McCollum be granted tenure as a social studies teacher effective August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Justine Walker be granted tenure as an elementary teacher effective August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Jenny Rocco be appointed as a school nurse effective May third, twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four and ending January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Salary is based upon CSCA contract, level eight, step thirteen, sorry, step four. See, I need I Ready.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Francesca Turley McDonough be appointed as a part-time bus attendant effective May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four and ending January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Salary is based upon CSCA contract, level four, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Benjamin Marandola be appointed on probation as a part-time bus attendant effective May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four and ending January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Salary is based upon CSCA contract, level four, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon, oops. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following part-time teachers be reappointed for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Karen
Bosacki, Bosacki.
Point seven-four FTA music teacher effective September first, twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Salary is based upon masters plus thirty, step nine. Uh, Jeff Perisanti, part-time point eight-four FTE business teacher effective September first, twenty twenty-three and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Salary is based upon ETA contract master step seven.
Second. Are those, oh, are those dates right for?
No.
Okay, repeat that. Jeff Perisanti, part-time point eight-four FTE business teacher effective September one, twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, salary is based upon ETA contract master step seven. Rachel Braun, part-time point eight O art teacher effective September twenty-one, twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Salary is based upon master step twelve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following employees be appointed for twenty twenty-four summer transportation. E. Peter Belgian, driver, attendant and bus cleaner. Janet Boncar, driver. Jana Bonzar, driver. Linda Chris, driver. Kathleen Jenko, driver. James Henry, driver. Corinne Keneffick, driver and attendant. Allison McKenzie, driver. Kimberly Mazurkowitz, driver. Ellen Polinsky, driver and attendant. Gordon Rogers, driver and nineteen A trainer. Bradley Sessana, driver. Dwight Seymour, driver. Cody Shamrock, driver. James Sullivan, driver. Thomas Talbot, driver. Daniel Field, driver. Patrick Tyre, driver. Paul Winter, driver. Emily Bauer, attendant. Patty Dulles, attendant and bus cleaner. Dawn Howie, attendant. Rebecca Lake, attendant. Lori Mohan, attendant. Francis Phillips, attendant. Judith Rizone, attendant. Beverly Sessana, attendant. Diane Strong, attendant and bus cleaner.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Marion Felon be appointed as an election inspector for the annual meeting and budget vote on Tuesday, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four at a rate of fifteen dollars and fifty cents per hour and further authorize district clerk to fill any vacancies in these positions which may occur prior to May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four with individuals from the Board of Elections Inspector Personnel List.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Can we have the newly tenured individuals?
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the results of the twenty twenty-four budget and board and election vote be accepted as follows. Proposition one, annual budget, two hundred and forty-three yes, one hundred and twenty-six no. Proposition one, budget passed. Proposition two, use of capital reserve funds for the acquisition of school buses and construction and maintenance equipment. Two hundred and sixty-nine yes, ninety-eight no. Proposition two, passed. Proposition three, use of technology reserve funds, the acquisition of technology equipment. Two hundred and eighty-six yes, eighty-two no. Proposition three, passed. Proposition four, creation of a new capital reserve fund for the future capital projects. Two hundred and fifty-two yes, one hundred and twelve no. Proposition four, passed. Board members reelected. Jennifer Horsho reelected with two ninety-six votes. John P. Jack Cuddy, reelected with two hundred and eighty-six votes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
And I beat Jack.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the revised district code of conduct be approved effective May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the varsity and modified overnight cheerleaders trip to the Universal Cheerleaders Association Camp in Greeley, Pennsylvania, August twelfth through fifteenth, twenty twenty-four be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Next, we have business report.
I would just like to thank everyone in the community who came out and supported our students and the important work the district is doing through the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five budget process. I would also like to thank the buildings and ground staff, Mrs. Tomasulo, Mrs. Pachinski and the election inspectors for their effort yesterday to ensure a safe and welcoming environment for the budget vote.
Next, we have the superintendent's report.
So I'd like to echo Mrs. Feldman's thanks to those involved with the development of the budget, including the board and, and you and your staff as well, Laura. Thank you for your efforts. Uh, our work on the budget started many, many months ago and the result of that work is what we put before the community last evening. Uh, to reiterate, the community had the opportunity to vote on a two percent tax increase and they did, resulting in a sixty-five percent positive vote for the budget. And over seventy percent positive votes, uh, for the propositions to purchase buses, technology equipment, and to create a new capital reserve, which will support future capital projects. Uh, meaning every dollar that we save in that capital reserve is, is less money that we will need to uh, either borrow or uh, ask our taxpayers to, uh, to share with us, if you will. Um, the positive vote, one of the highest percentages in the last decades, really a testament to the work and dedication of everyone in the district. I want to thank all those who voted, no matter how they cast their ballot. Our school district will thrive and continue to be successful based on the deep community connections and we heard a little bit of that tonight. Of course, congratulations to Jen Horsho and Jack Cuddy on their reelection to the Board of Education. I look forward to continuing to work with both of you. To our, our presenters this evening, young, young and right in campus and our I Ready team, Mrs. LaRosa and our three wonderful students. Thank you for your presentations. They were really outstanding and, and uplifting. And Sabrina, don't worry, we will leave the light on for you.
Next, we have tenure celebrations, Mr. Sortisio.
Okay, so there, there, there's, I, I was going through this in my mind. You know, what are the top five days of, of the school year? And, and this is one of them. Um, I, I will say that number one is always watching our kindergartners and our pre-K students get off the bus that very first day. Um, it's amazing how much, how quickly they grow, but as, as a, as a father of adult children now, seeing those little ones just starting school is ab- absolutely one of the top five, but being able to be here, uh, and recognize the outstanding achievements of some pretty incredible professionals, uh, it, it makes, makes that top five. And if you've been around schools long enough, you know there's a lot of competition between graduation and, and all the other fantastic things that, that go on. Our first day of the year when the entire district is in this room and they get to listen to me and I always tell them a fish story. I know they look forward to that over the summer months. I hope, I hope you caught at least a big fish this time. Um, but anyway, the professional accomplishments are, are one to be very proud of. Our building principals and directors look forward to this evening as, as much as I do because they get to publicly recognize and brag about some incredible teachers and staff members. Tonight I get to join them as I get to brag about some pretty incredible administrators as well. Uh, I do ask that our building principals, when it's your turn, you approach the, uh, the podium, recognize, uh, those who you, you are prepared to recognize, uh, those folks who have been in tenure this evening. Uh, and Mrs. Carter, why don't you start?
I'm gonna thank Mrs. Anger for making me be able to speak right now. Yeah, thanks so much. Okay, I am starting with Justine Walker. She is not here today because she is just about to have her first baby. So really excited for her. Tomorrow is her last day of work with us this school year. Um, Justine started with us in two thousand twenty and she is a gen ed elementary teacher who also supports our ICT classrooms. And some of her amazing strengths, she is certified in elementary education, literacy, and students with disabilities. So she is incredibly well-rounded teacher who accepts all students with passion, understanding, creativity. Um, she is truly very patient. She is knowledgeable of all our students' learning styles. Um, she is so willing to support them in any way she can. Um, it was really interesting. She is so worried about kindergarten celebration and finding a way to come back and watch them walk across the stage and get their little graduation diplomas, even though she's going to be out on maternity leave, um, because she truly does create a wonderful learning environment, a community, a family, and she believes all of those things with the utmost belief that she possibly can have. Um, so when she thinks about the relationships of her students and her families, once they're her student, they're always her student. So as much as she's willing to get so excited about celebrating her first family of her own, she really, it's really hard for her to leave her own students. We are so lucky to have her in Eden and be that first experience for our youngest learners and she makes a tremendous difference for children, families and finds a way for all children to be successful at the kindergarten level. So I am so excited to have Justine receive tenure today at the Eden District, so. The second person I am celebrating this evening and she received tenure earlier on in the year, I believe it was probably in October. But we're celebrating today is Alana Ziegler Smith. She came to us in two thousand nineteen and I do know she's here with her husband.
Yeah, come on up. Come on up, Alana. Yeah, that's part of it.
I always say that Alana is
The last rite of passage. Come on up.
Yes.
Come on up. Oh, yeah.
So Alana is part of the first grade dream team, I call them. She also is in an ICT classroom. She's one of the teachers I always say I stole from Buffalo City Schools. So her and I have a little personal relationship. I met her at a CrossFit gym. And I always, when we've had an opening, I said, oh, you really should come look at Eden. Um, so Alana also is an elementary education teacher and she is also certified with students with disabilities. And she has this unique ability to find a way for every child to find a way to learn. Um, they're, become the best that they possibly can be. Um, I would say that Eden probably did something that she probably never in her wildest dreams would imagine. She also teaches with her closest lifelong friend, um, who also came from Buffalo City School District. So they are so very happy to be part of the Eden community. I know this for a fact. Um, they have made it their home. They make their classroom a home for their They make their classroom a home for their children. They accept them. They love them. They are creative. They meet every one of their needs. They are some of the most patient people I've ever met in my entire life. They provide differentiated instruction for all children. Their children shine. They succeed. I know Mr. Sartisio has been in their classrooms. Mrs. Maxson has been in their classrooms. We have, they work with student teachers. They are wonderful mentors of new teachers. We have teachers come and observe them. They provide just such a unique classroom for all children. They are strong communicators with their families. They have such an incredible amount of enthusiasm for their children. They work with many other adults in their classroom. They work with teacher aides. They truly believe in communication, collaboration. They are kind to other adults in the building. They are great team players with their first grade team. I can't say enough about them. I am so lucky to have stolen them from Buffalo City Schools. I know that they made a lot of sacrifices to come to us, and we are so very fortunate to be offering Mrs. Ziegler-Smith also tenure. And we're very happy. She's also had some children while she's been with us also, and we're so glad that she's here. So, thank you.
Hello. I am happy to be first recommending Miss Danielle Carbone, who is here tonight.
So while Danielle is making her way down, I think I owe an explanation of why I'm making you come forward. The board has heard about everyone that's being presented tonight. During the executive session, when we talked about our tenure candidates and explained, you know, the qualities that are being espoused tonight, and it's only fair for them to put all this wonderful information with a face. So a little selfish on my part, but thank you for your willingness to step forward.
Danielle has been with us for the past four years as the GLP and EE Computer Lab teacher. She came to us with five years of experience from another district, which is a theme I think you're going to hear tonight. I think Eden is really a desired place to work, so we heard that from the ones that Lauren presented, and we're going to hear that from the three that I'm going to talk about. Danielle's Computer Lab is one where students learn not only basic skills, but they have the opportunity to be creative through projects and different hands-on opportunities that she provides them. One way that she does that, she participates with the Teacher Center Tech Tool Tryout Program. One example is she got some awesome robots for the kids to work on and do coding with. Another feather in our cap is she has led the Elementary Computer Lab Girls Who Code Club, which is an after-school club, which really empowers girls to learn coding and that mathematical thinking through different projects and hands-on, and they just, they love it and thrive, and it helps build their confidence and be able to see that they too can be mathematicians, engineers, computer scientists, and go into those fields. So it provides that foundational skill for them. She's a member of the District Technology Committee and always contributes and participates in the GLP and EE Reading Nights, among other things. Her Computer Lab is a fun learning environment that Danielle has worked very hard to create. So congratulations to Danielle for earning tenure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we have Christina Damer. So Mrs. Damer has been with us for the past four years as a grade four gen ed classroom teacher. She had ten years of experience prior to coming to Eden, and both in private schools, and she was a staff development specialist at BOCES. Christina possesses a strong knowledge of curriculum and instruction, especially using data. She creates a positive environment, positive and vibrant classroom learning community where all students thrive. Her classroom is very calm and centered, student-centered, and just very calm and patient environment. She utilizes data to personalize instruction and is an instructional leader on our grade fourteen. Christina is a member of our District Technology Committee. She's a member of the EE Instructional Support Team, our IST Team, which meets almost weekly. She's been our ELA BOCES rep and has been part of our math pilot team. She always supports building events such as field day, concerts, and reading night. Christina, congratulations. We appreciate you. Now we have Amy Lincoln. So Amy's been with us for the past three years as a grade five classroom teacher. She's a gen ed teacher. This year, she participated in our co-teach model. She creates a wonderful, welcoming environment for all her students. She's come to us with twenty years of past experience from another local district as a classroom teacher and an instructional coach for ELA. Amy's classroom is one that's student-centered and provides learning opportunities for students to collaborate, think critically, and learn the skills to be independent learners. Amy's a member of our Eden Elementary Shared Decision-Making Team, our Instructional Support Team. She's part of our reading pilot team and always supports building events such as reading night and math night. And in addition to all that, she's also a modified, our modified girls' basketball coach. So thank you, Amy. Congratulations.
My back was to Laura, so I was making sure that she was here. So Laura Burkeby, school psychologist at GLP and EE. She's our kindergarten through fifth grade school psychologist. I'm excited to be here tonight recommending Laura. She has been an amazing asset to our district. Not only is she in charge of evaluations for our students, but she provides counseling and support to our students who have the most mental health needs. She also goes into classrooms and supports our students within the classrooms, as well as providing support to them in the counseling suite in their offices. She's part of our family support team, which meets with families and students outside of the school day. She is a great resource in connect for mental health night. She helps to organize and orchestrate that, and she's just done an amazing job with all of that. We're so excited to have her as part of our team each and every day. I know myself, as well as Mrs. LaRosa and Mrs. Carter, really rely on Laura's expertise when it comes around creating positive behavior plans for our students, supporting the teachers, lifting that work. It's something that we've really seen a great need for over the past few years. She's been instrumental in helping us in the creation of and the lifting of our eight-one-one program, which was the new self-contained program that we have at GLP. So we can't thank her enough for everything she does for the district, and I feel truly honored and blessed to work alongside of her. So thank you to Laura, and we're excited to recommend you for tenure this evening. You're welcome.
Okay, good evening. Jeff Cervone, middle school principal. I am here on behalf of Stephanie McCallum. Come on up, Mrs. McCallum. So I have the pleasure on speaking on behalf of Mrs. Stephanie McCallum. She's been with us for four years as our seventh grade social studies teacher. Stephanie began in September of twenty one. We hired her the year Linda Pace retired. Some of you might remember, Mrs. Pace was here forever. And we got Stephanie. She comes with about ten years total experience, and she was with the Buffalo Public Schools prior to Eden. So another one of the Buffalo teachers that came here, and we appreciate taking him from Buffalo. So Stephanie has a lot of great strengths. Her connection with students jumps out at me. Stephanie won Teacher of the Year, Year One, voted by students. It's impressive. Excellent knowledge of curriculum and instruction. She's just a true professional. Stephanie is our Model UN Advisor for the past three years. She's our GSA Advisor for the past two. She's got great goals that we talk about. She wants to teach AP courses. She wants to continue growing the profession by taking student teachers. She wants to be department chair one day, and she's looking forward to any leadership opportunities that present in our building or district. Stephanie, congratulations on earning your tenure. It is a well-deserved milestone, and we truly are fortunate to have you as an educator in our district. Your dedication, passion, and commitment to excellence continue to make a significant difference in the lives of our students and our school community. Thank you. Congratulations. Mr. McDonough?
Good evening. I have the pleasure to speak on behalf of Mr. Miles Kifner, so approach the podium. So, good evening. I have the distinct pleasure of speaking on behalf of Mr. Miles Kifner and receiving his tenure here at Eden. Miles has now been teaching for five and a half years, where he teaches band and jazz. A number of, just a few number of his strengths, his approach to students and families is one of inclusivity and empathy. He's a team player, not just within the music department, but within the school community as well. His, since his, since his arrival here, he has helped to grow. His connection to the students here is noticeable no matter what he does. He's actually doubled the size of the band here. When he first started, there were seventy-two. Now there's about a hundred and thirty students involved in the band, and I'm sure that will continue to grow, and that's just how he treats the students in the community here. A number, a few more of the things that he does. He's a director of the Pitt Orchestra and the Jazz Ensemble. He's a co-advisor of the Gay-Straight Alliance. He's a facilitator of the junior and senior high school community band, and he's also involved with NISMA. He also takes the students to Daring Lake Music Competition, where there's over eighty teams that compete when they go. He's a director of the Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony, coordinator of the commencement ceremony music, and co-director of the Eden Symphony Orchestra, just to name of the few things that he does to stay involved here. In conclusion, Mr. Miles Kifner's tenure here at Eden is a testament to his unwavering commitment, exceptional talent, and visionary leadership. We are fortunate to have him as a part of our educational community, and I am confident that he will continue to inspire and nurture the musical talents of our students here for years to come. Thank you again, and congratulations, Mr. Miles Kifner.
There's just a couple of things I want to point out about all of the educators that were just presented to you. Quite a cross-section of folks in terms of their level of experience. Some homegrown, some have come from a little bit further away. But one thing that you need to remember, when we hire people, we are not looking for who we are, because we already, we already are those people, right? We're hiring for who we want to become. So I don't want to use the term game changer, because that means you didn't have a good game. But certainly a game improver, if you will. And each of these folks that was presented to you have done some amazing things to improve the educational outcomes for our students. Okay, Alana and Danae, I've spent a significant amount of time in their room. This board knows how passionate I am about integrated co-teaching and how important it is. They are the ideal team. So when Lauren says dream team, that means to me that anybody who is interested in co-teaching should visit that classroom. And it doesn't matter what grade level you're teaching, because good teaching is transformative no matter the age group. So I could talk about each of these folks individually. Miles and I could talk about his interview and how long it lasted until he finally showed me who he is. And thank goodness, I had a lot of time that day, right? Because you are a rock star, and I appreciate you. So I don't want to embarrass anybody else too much, just the people that I think can won't get back at me in a negative way. So anyway, I tend to get myself in trouble when I birdwalk a little bit. I have the pleasure of presenting three administrators tonight, and I decided I would simply go in alphabetical order. So Lori Gregory, you're first. And I'm going to read what I wrote when I made the recommendation to the board, and then I'm going to say a couple of things as well. So Lori Gregory has been an outstanding addition to the district, the district office, and the middle high school. She handles the varied facets of her position adeptly and with aplomb. Lori has grown significantly in understanding and investigating the nuances of residency issues, and I think she really loves that part of her job. She approaches this work in a professional manner with a willingness to work with families when warranted. Lori is a true instructional leader. She provides honest feedback and suggestions for instructional improvement. She has those hard conversations with people that need to hear them. Teachers are actually starting to seek Lori's counsel on best teaching practices, and that has to feel really good to you. In addition, she's been an integral in establishing MTSS protocols, procedures, and expectations at the middle high school. To be clear, her work in this area has seen significant changes at the middle level. Work at the high school level is ongoing and in progress. Lori's worked collaboratively with her administrative colleagues to identify systems that will work at the primary, elementary, and secondary levels that focus on supporting student needs. She's recognized that systems do not need to be identical as long as they work in concert. Lori's taken a lead in establishing the district-wide focus on mental health awareness through our partnership with Sam here. She also has responsibilities serving as a district CIO. This work often goes unnoticed because she handles those responsibilities professionally with little need for support. And the board may remember, when we interviewed Lori, I said, you haven't talked at all about your CIO responsibilities. And she constantly, yeah, you just do them. She's like, I think that's what we need, right? So Lori, personally, it's a pleasure working with you. You know, being in district office, it's, you're a big support to me, whether you know it or not, okay? You've grown, and you're always interested in continuing to grow, and I do appreciate that. Thank you for your efforts. Congratulations. He knows his alphabet. Mr. Jason Iwanko. Mr. Iwanko has demonstrated significant growth. We can say these things to each other in all areas of his administrative responsibilities. As athletic director, Jay continues to lead a department that boasts very high student participation. I personally witnessed Jay's unique ability to connect with all students and certainly student athletes. The academic eligibility program has been refined, modernized, and made more accessible under his leadership. I've been most impressed with Jay's ability to connect with seasoned coaches and staff members to a point where his advice is sought after and appreciated. Jay's also demonstrated patience and a student-centered focus in his work as an assistant principal. He continues to be a support for both the middle and high school principals, as well as the faculty and staff at MHS. So Jay, I distinctly remember a conversation that we had early on, and your frustration at not being able to reach to the level that you wanted to. And when I say seasoned coaches, that just means people have been around a really long time, right? Well-seasoned, and how difficult that can be. But what I remember distinctly about that conversation is you were determined to find a way to support their important work, because you knew the impact on student athletes. And you did. And I remember about a year later, you came to me and said, you know that thing we talked about? I said, yeah, we did. Yeah, I did it, and it really worked, and I feel really good about this. So I appreciate that. I appreciate your willingness to seek counsel, apply it, and grow, and then continue to grow again. So I appreciate that very much. If you want to know how much Jay means to our students, our student athletes, come to our athletic celebration on June sixth, right? Because that clearly is your room. And those parents, and those coaches, and those students, that is your crowd. You own them. And I mean that in the best way, because they know how hard you work for them. You're a great advocate for all of our students, whether they're athletically involved or not. You've really helped us move forward in our unified programs. I know you continue to have some plans to grow that as well. But the other thing that I want to mention is one of the reasons that you're successful, and this is for everybody in the room, probably mostly me, is you continue to maintain the right life balance. You said something to me last night. The girls' lacrosse game, we were way ahead, running clock. Jay came over and said, I'm going to hit the road. I want to get home before my boys go to bed. And you do that, and I'm proud of you for that. And don't ever stop doing that. I'm getting choked up. I know, but I'm telling you, do not forget the importance of your family, because they're why, they are a big reason why you're as successful as you are. Just making sure I have the right sheet in front of me, that's all. That's the only reason for the pause. It's a pleasure to it's a pleasure to recommend Mary Maxson for tenure in our district. Mary's an expert in her field, works diligently to support our most needed students as a keen understanding of the importance of inclusive education model. Mary utilized the results of the district-wide special education program audit to develop a plan to move the district to a more robust inclusive model. This took planning, collaboration, and professional development. I am confident that the pathway Mary has developed will lead to a fully inclusive model in the next few school years. Mary also demonstrates a fiscally responsible approach to her work. Mary and her support team are responsible for ensuring the district receives the proper amount of Medicaid, a practice that was nearly abandoned prior to Mary's arrival. In addition, Mary is always willing to assist her colleagues and me with whatever work is needed, sometimes to a fault. She's a true team player and certainly dedicated to her work in the Eden Central School District. Mary is an integral part of the administrative council, and I consider her a trusted colleague. So there are a few people, actually, most of them, on the administrative team that on occasion I have to remind them to stop working. Mary leads the pack, right? Because you are a taskmaster, and someone I am, as I said, quite proud to call my colleague. There are things that we endure in our lives that make us stronger, that we we won't go too deep into this, because I don't think I can. But I am absolutely so proud of you for so many things. And I know that you also cherish your family, and I appreciate them coming and visiting us tonight. I think it's probably more than just because we have a big cake to celebrate with later. But Mary, I don't have to ask you to grow, because you will, and I know you'll go as far as you ever choose to. So thank you for everything that you do for the district. So this concludes our recognition of our tenure recipients. We have a little bit more meeting to go through. I just want everyone in the room to know that we have a reception that will follow in the library. I just want everyone in the room to know that we have a reception that will follow in, uh, in the library. Um, so I hope you can all join us for that after the meeting concludes.
Next up, the student report, Georgia Horshol.
Hi, I'm Georgia Horshol. I am the Vice President of the Senior Student Council, and I just have some updates on what's been going on the past few months. So the middle school and high school enjoyed the musical Footloose, which was performed March seventh through tenth. I got to watch some of it in school. It was very good. Forty middle and high school students attended the same year presentation and the Sabers Practice on March twelfth. Then on March fifteenth, members of the High School Student Council attended their yearly team-building field trip, and they went to Get Air and Sonic. On March nineteenth, the students participated in the third presentation from Same Here with special guest Leroy Collins. Then we had Spring Spirit Week, which was March twenty-fifth through March twenty-eighth. That was a very fun week. We had barbecue dads and soccer moms, which was really fun. Um, the middle school enjoyed Math Science Night on March twenty-sixth, and students completed activities created by SUNY Fredonia's Math and Science Teaching Students. On April twenty-fifth, students had the opportunity to experience a unified basketball game versus Orchard Park. The students had a great time cheering on their classmates. Then on April twenty-sixth, the art club students took a field trip to the art museum. Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week was May sixth through tenth, and the teachers played games and received prizes, were provided with snacks and drinks, and received notes from students. The high school celebrated Signing Week from April twenty-ninth to May third. Students and staff participated in a variety of themed days, including Decision Day, where seniors and staffs, staff members represented colleges they attended or planned to attend. And then finally, we had the Powderpuff Game yesterday, May twenty-first. Thank you.
Sound just like your mother. That's a good thing. Um, next up, board report roundtable. I just had something real quick. Um, Sabrina Anger, my niece. Um, I want to thank everybody. I look out, there's so many people here. Sabrina, uh, her mother is my sister, and her husband raised their three kids here in Eden. They all came through this school district. And Catherine Laverdy is the reason Sabrina wanted to become a teacher. Um, and, uh, from that point on, always wanted to be a teacher and teach here. Um, I was just coming out of teaching, and I was like, well, you know, that'd be great, but don't, you know, you don't know how things are going to end up, but it, it worked in her favor. And our family, I mean, those of you, Mr. Savoni, you dealt with Sabrina. Not always an easy task at the high school, uh, middle school level. Uh, Bill, you coached her in swimming at some point. Um, I'm trying to think who else has had, but there's a lot of people here that have helped her through this district as a student. And I really do hope, as an aunt, they do relocate back to, uh, Eden, uh, and, uh, that there, if there is an opportunity that she can try again to stay here. So I just wanted to say thank you from my perspective, okay?
I just wanted to say congratulations to everybody who received tenure tonight. Um, that's a huge accomplishment, and you should be very proud of yourselves, and we hope that, you know, your career continues for many years to come. Um, I'm just thankful for everybody who came out to vote. Um, although it wasn't as big of a turnout as we had hoped, but it still, it still worked. Um, the art show was amazing, though. It was really cool to walk through. Man, those kids are pretty talented. There's some really good stuff out there. Um, and yeah, we're just wrapping up the school year, super excited. And just for future reference, we should probably have tissues, because I was not, I feel like I wiped all of my makeup off my face. Um, and I don't know if you guys can hear that, but something is going on with the microphones, and I feel like we're in, like, Jurassic Park, like that. What is that? It's crazy. It's not me.
Oh, I would just say that all the teachers who attended tonight should be very proud of all the hard work that they accomplished, and hopefully they will continue to go on and accomplish even more.
I'll, I'll echo the same. Um, someone that's kind of come full circle. Uh, my wife's retiring from teaching in thirty-five days. Uh, new, uh, new life at the Sutman household, but, you know, I want to thank those teachers that have taken the, the leap of faith to come to Eden. You know, it, you really make a difference. We're, uh, just had my oldest graduate from WVU in four years with a neuroscience degree. Um, I've got my second one graduating with a double major here next May. But, um, you know, just thanks for taking that, that leap of faith, you know, to, to come to Eden. Uh, you truly do make a difference, and, um, I'd like to also welcome back Jack and Jen for another three years to the board, so we're going to kind of keep the, uh, keep the band together. And, uh, let's just finish the year strong. No executive session tonight, right?
Um, the next regular Board of Education meeting is June twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, at six PM in the Eden Elementary Auditorium.
No, it's not.
Oh, that, okay.
I just got to get fixed, it's not that quick.
Am I fired? Am I fired?
Absolutely not. It's, it's going to be in the district someplace. We promise we'll tell you where.
Justin, it'll be somewhere, maybe in the parking lot. I don't know. Um, the reorganization and regular Board of Education meeting Tuesday, July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, at six PM.
It's the second. Not twenty-second. You might be fired now.
No.
Make me look bad.
You're doing great. You're doing great.
No.
No, you're just giving dates.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education meeting be adjourned at seven twenty-five PM.
Second.
All favor.
Aye. Thank you for coming. Thanks for coming.
Please join us, uh, in the library, uh, for our reception.